So I would like to nominate Maureen as the chair.
I'll second that motion.
I'm going to call the vote.
Okay, let's call the vote. So, no further nominations for the chair, so nominations, all in favor for Maureen?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this will be the last year, Mr. Stevens.
We'll see.
With any luck at all. Okay, now we need nominations for, for a vice chair.
Yeah.
And we don't want to lose a good five.
Okay. We seek nominations for the vice chair.
I move it not to the vice chair.
Second.
Okay, you accept that nomination?
I do.
And it was pretty hard to any for the nominations, those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Looks like unanimous vote, clerk. I would make a motion to recognize Mr. Stevens as in that position. Any second?
Second.
Do you have a second of the motion to nominate Mr. Richard Stevens to act as the clerk for this upcoming calendar year, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have all gotten our new job descriptions here quickly. Please understand that it is definitely a work that we all work together, there is no such thing as the chair, other than to open the meeting and to close the meeting, pretty much. So, that being said, I welcome Mr. Stevens here this evening, thank him for taking the time and the responsibility of running for this position. I would tell you that while it's a great opportunity to do a lot of work, there are many days when you leave saying, "What have I done?" So, welcome.
Thank you very much.
I know you are carrying on, I think, a family thing, I think your dad used to be on the select board and a chair.
Dad was, yep, dad was.
And I know that, and I believe your dad can take a lot of responsibility for actually hiring me, because he was on the school, he was on the school committee as well.
How many years was that, Rich?
Twelve on school committee and twelve on the select board. And my great-great-grandfather was a selectman in 1866.
Well, let me put it this way then, you have far more, okay, credentials than either of us, so we check on that. Okay, moving on, we are, I look for a notion to open a public hearing for application of a alcohol liquor license for Rowena's Resort Bar and Restaurant. My watch is talking to me for some reason.
I move to open the public hearing for the application of alcohol liquor license for Rowena's Resort Bar and Restaurant, LLC.
We have a motion made, we have a second?
Yes, second.
We have a motion made and seconded to open the hearing, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the hearing's open. And we have, all of the application materials have been completed?
Yeah.
Okay, would you just like to give us an, just a very brief discussion of where this, you know, establishment will be, the hours of operation, et cetera?
So my name is Christopher Flood, this is Rowena Cordero.
Hi, Rowena, how are you? Welcome.
Rowena wants to open a restaurant on Stetson Street, there previously was something there, I understand for many years, has been closed, and she's going to open our Rowena's Resort Bar and Restaurant.
Okay.
And so, with the plans that came, you know, you see it's a two-floor establishment.
Yes.
Has 54 seats, previously wasn't like a license there. Rowena's had over 30 years' experience as a nursing assistant and health worker, but always wanted to open a restaurant, it's going to be an eclectic mix of different foods, and...
Could you give me the hours of the restaurant?
So, because of the bar, she's hoping to be open the maximum hours that would be allowed in the Town of Barry. She may not open those hours, but rather than violate any of those rules, we just want to see what the maximum hours would be for this, for this license in the Town of Barry.
I believe the chief is here. What's the maximum for a liquor establishment in the evening, chief?
I'd have to look that up.
Okay.
You know, sometimes it's one.
That was, that was the license that was in effect in that establishment previous to your application, so we're not...
Where's Stetson?
Upper deck, it was the upper deck.
Oh, oh.
Okay. That's Stetson Road, it comes down there?
Yeah, upper deck.
Yeah, yeah.
So the place is like 4,100 square feet, two floors. So, just as some background, Rowena has already been tips trained, she's going to make sure that all of her servers are also tips trained, she's familiar with the restrictions on the surface of alcohol, so she just got her certification, and she'll make sure every other server is tips trained.
Okay.
Do you have any specific questions for us?
I don't have any specific questions, other than the ones we've already asked.
Has building and fire been through the building, are they all set?
I don't think building and fire has been through the building yet, to my knowledge, we haven't yet, we're under agreement to purchase it.
Okay, very good.
So it's subject to getting a license, we're hoping to close in May.
Does occupancy would follow that a building inspector, and then close the fire?
So do we need a new occupancy permit in order to get the license?
I'm not sure what the status is.
Okay.
But our building commissioner would understand that.
Yeah.
So we'll reach out to the building commissioner, and see what we have to do to go to the next step.
Exactly.
I don't expect there to be any problems, it's just a finality that, you know, they set, they set the occupancy problem based on the square footage, and then the fire would make sure the fire suppression, you know, smoke alarms, see all that stuff.
We haven't closed yet, but we'll reach out to both of them.
Okay. Great. Further questions?
I do not.
We're looking for a motion to approve?
Yeah, I would move to approve the application for the alcoholless license for Rowena's Bar, Resort Bar and Restaurant, LLC.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the application for the liquor license for Rowena's Resort Bar and Restaurant, LLC. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have a vote? Remember, please, the building inspector, the fire inspector, because you don't want to get too far down the road, and then that doesn't seem to work out, but that place recently closed, so I would suspect it's pretty close to...
We'll reach out to both of them soon.
That'd be great. Thank you so much, Rowena, nice to meet you.
Anything else you must call?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a minor note that TV screens and all that will also require you to come back to them.
Entertaining, yeah. I'll give them those.
So there's additional things you may want to come back to them on, once you figure out the details, but I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you.
If you're on a TV and you don't have that license, that means we're breaking the law.
Thank you.
That's part of the common there, yeah. We do that with the common VIX license that will be coming up, yep. They get all that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a brief public comment period that we have kind of restricted the amount of time, usually about 15 minutes, if there's individuals who have a particular comment or question of the board, Matt?
Yeah, I was just curious what your process is for looking for the permanent town administrator? I know that you've gone through the interim, I don't know, are you looking at going to consultant again, or are you going to look to save some money and go through the search committee process, I didn't know, I haven't seen it on the agenda, so I don't know.
It's not on this agenda, but under, under our reports, that will be one of the things that will be posted for our next meeting, where we'll be talking about the search and replacement for the town administrator position, so. We haven't made that, we haven't really had an opportunity as a board to discuss that since, it's not been since the election, so. Okay, any, yes, sir?
Okay, Roger Curry from Council of Aging, may I approach?
Sure.
This is the copy of the bylaws for Council of Aging, for your in Barrett, and, I'm sorry, I didn't take four.
That's okay, I've got a copy from TMI.
Thanks, Roger.
At the very top of the page, it states, pro, pro...
Perspective.
Thank you. COA members shall be nominated by a majority of existing members of the Council of Aging, and no person is, person so nominated for the Council of Aging membership is service on the COA until appointed by the Board of Selectmen. My question for the Board of Selectmen, I understand on the agenda tonight, you have a person that is applying for...
Yes.
The Council of Aging. She has not come in front of the Council of Aging at all. We haven't seen her, haven't met her, haven't read any of her background. I'm asking that the Board delay their decision on that until the Council of Aging has time to go over that.
Do you represent the Council on Aging?
Yes, I am the chair.
Oh, you are, okay. Sounds like a reasonable request.
Yeah.
Second question for the Board is, does the Director of the Senior Center have the authority to make changes inside the building, such as moving offices and building a new office?
That would be subject to the, to the, obviously, the select board, and also to the building commissioner, obviously, we can't add or detract from what would be appropriate from a safety perspective or whatever, so.
Moving offices would be fine, but as far as doing an alteration to the building or anything like that, definitely has to go, absolutely.
It would involve cost as well, and I would imagine that would have to come in front of the Board.
If you're, if you're saying moving offices, in other words, you take me and say, "Your office is going to be not this room, but that room," that certainly would be probably within the purview of the COA or the Director. If you were restructuring the building in a way to create an office where there wasn't one, and utilizing spaces for some other reason, then that would have to come to the Board.
Okay, that is what is put in front of us.
Okay, that is a proposal, I'm not, not aware of it, but...
Okay, it has come up in our last meeting, so I, I want to cover the Board as well as the Director, as well as the town.
Well, thank you.
Third is, does the Director have the authority to rewrite a job description for a town employee?
She would have the right, okay, to make a recommendation to this Board to restructure a job description, yes.
So she would have to come to the Board?
If she was going to restructure, that is a town employee, so yes, we would have to approve a change in job description.
Okay, 'cause that, again, came up in the meeting, that she wants to rewrite a job description, I wanted to make sure that I could advise the rest of the Board members on what is legal, what is not, so.
It is very appropriate for her to make a recommendation to change the job description.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not disputing that, my dispute, really not a dispute, it's a question of whether or not she can do that without coming to the Board first.
Her recommendation obviously would come to us, and that would be up to the Board to deliberate and to make a decision about.
Okay.
Of course, if you're adding a bunch of duties, you know, with it, whatever, you know, compensation and all that, that would have to, you know, I mean, that we can't just, can't just make a change and add a bunch of things to it, and that's the way it is, so.
And I understand bottom line on a good job description reach and all other duties as a side.
If she can get it in.
True, it's true. I've written enough of them. So, that's all I have, I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much for spending time with us this evening. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, let's move on. Okay.
Not, because there's nothing been forward, whether or not, so I really don't have a question.
Are you all set?
It was a thought that I'm gonna...
Wait for another time?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on, looking for approval of the meeting minutes for April 7th, both the regular session and for release, and for April 7th executive session, not for release.
April 7th?
April 2nd.
April 2nd. Yeah, but yours says 7.
Mine says 7.
It does.
Had I missed, no, I put the new ones on top.
Well, it's April 2nd.
Oh, I've got, I've got an old copy that I, that I studied from, okay.
Anyhow, I move to approve...
The top one was April 2nd. Yeah, it is April 2nd.
The meeting minutes, April 2nd, 2025?
We have a motion made to approve the meeting minutes from April 2nd, 2025, we have a second?
I can't participate, I wasn't here.
We have a second from the, from the chair. We have a motion made and seconded for approval of April 2nd, 2025 meeting minutes, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are for release. We have, on the executive session, April 2nd, 2025, we need a motion?
I move to approve the executive session meeting minutes, April 2nd, 2025, not for release.
I will second that, and those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, moving on quickly now to town administrator report.
So I just wanted to say for our EV charging stations, we now have a charge on it.
That's a surprise to some people, who are pulling up. If you are charging your electric EV vehicle, before it was sort of part of an original grant, I think, that the town got, and now there is a charge to that, and use your credit card to...
Oh, really?
Slipped through the cracks for a few years somehow.
Oh, okay.
Is there a today amount that you...
So far, so far, I did look today, because I was curious myself.
Is that going to surprise everybody?
Forty-nine dollars, and I went back, forty-nine dollars.
Twenty-nine dollars in what, a week?
Not even.
Not even a week.
Seventeen dollars the first night, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, one other source of revenue for us.
No, when people come over, I guess, is there a sign that says, "This is now charged," or...
Well, you have to put your credit card in to work, so that it works.
Are they going to be surprised?
So now, doing it on the phone, they're going to know they can't do it unless, unless they...
Oh, really, it's on the phone?
Oh, it'll be a surprise, I'm sure, because they've been getting it for free. So...
So that's one thing, I also wanted to make a comment, Jennifer Loyal-Breen from the dam reached out to me, actually, today, and she just wanted to know what the next steps are for the old reservoir dam, so I just thought I'd put it out there.
Well, I think that, well, obviously, we have, we know what the state has for its opportunities under this grant, and we know that there has been an interesting non-binding vote by the, by the community that we will take, obviously, and that has to be something that we deal with relatively quickly if we want to have access to the grant program that the state offers, for, to do either removal and, and/or, you know, restoring the river bank, river itself to its original flow, or whether or not there is a recommendation that, from this Board, to do something else with that, so.
So maybe we can...
So, yeah, well, we need definitely to get, to get on that, and that should be part of our May 5th meeting, along with what we're doing with the search for the new town administrator.
Are we entirely sure that the money's still there?
So I'm going to reach out to her tomorrow, let her know that it's going to go into May 5th meeting, and I'll make sure that the funding is still there for us, so I'll reach out to her tomorrow.
I find it unlikely that it's going to be there long.
Yes, I do think, obviously, a decision probably needs to be...
I agree, I think the boys are getting back, so the state's trying to fund all the other programs. Do we need, is that an eminent domain process?
Yeah, let's...
An eminent domain process?
For access.
Well, if we decided, okay, if the Board decides to go into the situation as, you know, having the town own the property and so forth, we probably have some eminent domain issues, but obviously, we have to decide, are we going to have, are we going to ever try to own the, this area? The question I have for the state is, who owns the dam now? Does the state own the dam? So if the state owns the dam, then they can go in for, with a construction, you know, easement, and they can do what they need to do, and then they leave. The only reason that we would want to own the dam is that if we left the dam, we repaired the dam, and thus, we, we took the responsibility and owned the dam through title, and that we would then understand that we had to have access to the dam to maintain, to maintain the dam as they would require, and also to have the dam reevaluated on a regular basis by engineers to ensure that it remains safe. This, and this is surprising to me, but I don't know a lot about dams, this is considered a high, okay, high danger dam, and it doesn't seem like that when you go up and look at it, but they, but, you know, it's, it's one that they feel is a high hazard, and that we should do something with it, we shouldn't just ignore it. But again, that is going to be a Board decision, and there is some information from the town based upon a non-binding vote that we can consider, and obviously, get more information from this Commonwealth as to what money they have, what timeframe we have to make a decision. I think they're very irritated with us for taking as long as we've taken, I think that's fair.
Is any, is anyone sure how long the eminent domain process would be before they can even go in there?
Well, I was expecting...
Is anybody, do you know, Matt? Have you ever been involved with anything like that, with the city?
It, it varies, because it, it comes down to if the owner of the property can test it, and right now, the owner of the property apparently can't be found.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm speaking about the access.
I think it's tax title. So if the town's going to own it, the cost is more the legal process, not paying the owner anything.
No, I'm saying...
Because the wording is completely different between eminent domain and tax title.
I'm just referring to the access to the dam, is what I'm saying, because you're going to, I think you're going to, we're going to come up, the state's going to go up against some pretty stiff competition, getting the land owners to say, "Yeah, you can come down through here and take the dam away that they want." My thoughts?
I think there's a lot of options.
It could, it could slow, it could slow it down a lot, you know what I mean?
But I also think that they can go down Flaherty Road and go through Mass Wildlife, and then all they have are very short, if they need access.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting that's...
Yeah, I'm not aware of the layout.
From the dam, but the idea is, if they really get a lot of pushback, they may just find another way to do it.
Right.
Ultimately, they may do eminent domain, or something like, I'm thinking the state, when it comes to an easement, to do work on something they consider not safe.
Yeah.
There's a lot of exceptions to the rules for them if they want to do that. A homeowner is going to have a very difficult time saying you can't.
Still takes time, and those, I just think, I just think the money will...
Well, the dam is going to be done for two to three years, it's just saying what you want them to do.
Exactly.
And then that just starts the timeline on whichever path you choose.
And then the permitting is going to take a long time, because it's extensive.
And I think the most important thing is to understanding that the permitting is a process that really, really will help, you know, anybody who owns land anywhere near it, answer any questions they have. I know that you and I have had a considerable amount of time to talk a little bit about what the permitting is, and it's quite a process, you know, so.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out the timeline myself, whether it's tax.
You will definitely be cheered by that.
Whether it's tax-taking or, or an immediate, it's still time, so I'm just trying to...
My understanding is, as the design moves forward, they're dealing with the land part, so those are running parallel, so by the time they're ready to do construction, they're both done.
Right.
So it's kind of like maybe a year and a half, two years probably for the design process, the land taking, and then the last year is do the work.
Yeah.
That's my, if it's a three-year plan, it could be four, it could be five, I'm not suggesting I have it, but it sounded from ACOM and GEN that it's at least three, you'd be lucky if you got it done in less than...
Well, that's what I was thinking, at least that.
Yeah, and then, Ted's pulling money back, we don't know where the money's going to be.
Yeah, I find it hard to believe it's going to be there, you know?
I don't know if it's federal money, I, I don't know where it came from.
Federal funds coming into the states, and then the governor, and the legislature have to reallocate to keep our state money, so I just don't know where that funding's going to lie down the road, over two, three years.
Well, nothing we...
I don't disagree.
Nothing we have any control over, though, so...
True, yeah, true.
No.
True.
My, my guess, though, is once a decision's made and they say, "Okay," that money is now considered committed, and they can't take it later, but it's not getting to that step of whichever direction in committing, leaves you open for that money to just disappear. That's my, what I believe is the case.
Will it be another open meeting for all the interested people?
Well, I, I think that we'll have a very comprehensive conversation about the dam, and we'll have some more information from the state at that point, we do have information about what the, you know, non-binding information will, you know, provide us with, and I believe from what I, my conversations with the state, is they're pretty tired of waiting for us. I think that's kind, and I would believe that, I, I don't think the state will be coming out again to give us a comprehensive review, they've been out, I think, three or four times at this point, and have answered questions for the public online, I know, and so forth, so I, I hate to speak for them, maybe they'll be willing to come out and do another, you know, provide us with more information. I think our issue is about land taking or not, and what, how we're going to do it, if we're going to do it, do we have to do it, or can the state just say, "Okay, if no one has a deed to this, it's state land, now let them worry about who might own it." Matt?
The one thing that I thought was very clear from GEN is, if you remove the dam, there's zero cost to the town to deal with the land, easements, and anything else.
Exactly.
Zero cost to the town for anything.
They didn't, they didn't...
That's exactly what she said.
They was, they said they weren't going to foot the bill for the acquisition of the land getting in.
There's no need to acquire the land if they remove the dam. The only reason you have to...
To get in there, though, what is, what do they have to do?
They're doing it, that's all them, it's a, it's a construction easement, and they were...
So you can, you can get, you can get, I don't, I'm not familiar, it's Flaherty Road, and then there's, there is state property that leads to it?
There is state property that, from what I understand, looking at parcel maps, leads you about 50 feet from it, and then somebody else that just cuts the coast off, and that's the mass fishing game that's further north on Flaherty. I've not made it to that point yet, because you always have that residence right there, and I'm never feeling comfortable to drive past them, even though I'm told that it's still a town road you can, but it's so rutted that if it's not dry, you don't want to try it unless you've got the right vehicle, and even in my pickup, I'm not willing to try that particular road when it's muddy. But when it comes to getting access, they could, they pay for it, and what they do is, they may find an owner and say, "Here's what I'm going to pay you to have this temporary access, and I'm going to rebuild it when I leave," but if a decision's made, it's not changing, and it's just they go to the other owner that gives them access.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could be East Quavon Land Trust using the very edge...
Yes, they do.
...of their property that gives them that access, and that might open up East Quavon for different reasons that could benefit them, I don't know, so it's a whole different, you're just guessing at that point, but if you keep the dam, now the town owns the property...
Oh, yeah, no, I understand all that, of course.
All the legal stuff, and you also own the time it's going to take the treasurer to do that.
And you own the future of its maintenance.
And the, the short term doesn't sound like a lot, it's when you get 15 years down the road, then they say, "This is the repair you need to do," and all of a sudden, it's a hundred thousand dollars. These are the things that pop up, and I'm not suggesting...
I agree.
It could be just simply, it was constructed poorly, but you didn't know it for 15 years. I'm just bringing that, those are the things that I've seen happen.
Well, I have yet to be convinced that the state, you know, the state is deemed this dam unsafe, can make the town have, like, any part in it whatsoever when it's privately-owned land that has not been taken by the tax taken, so what, how's that work?
I would say...
You would say, or you would know?
No, no, I'm saying there was an example here in this town. IMS owns that pond.
Gaston Pond?
Gaston Pond is it?
Very familiar.
And that dam is not IMS's dam, but we don't own it either, they could not find records of who owned it, so what they said is, "Town, you have to deal with it," and DPW had to go out and do work to rebuild the inlet or outlet, the buttments, and they had to work on it, so the, the state can say, "The town, you own it," because what, how the state looks at everything in this state, is they own everything, and what they've done is, they've given the town the stewardship and responsibility of the borders of Barry, and if anybody in that town fails to complete their own obligations under their private use of the land, the town's obligation is to resolve it, and the state will just flow it down, and you'll just end up owning it, and they won't have money to give you later, so they'll just come back and say, "You remove it, or you repair it, I don't care, but you have a deadline." That's what they did up there, I'm just saying, it wasn't the same high hazard, but it was still a hazard, and it turned into what it did, and we ended up having to do it anyway, despite saying, "It's not our land, it's not our dam."
So if you've seen this before, I had a question. I don't know if anybody can answer it. When you lose the body of water, the land, the butter's owned to the water, what happens then? Who owns that land?
You see?
That is something I have thought about. And I have no clue how they're gonna redraw those lands right up to the river. I would think somehow, and I doubt it's gonna be like the state will do it, but they might. Where what they do is they may just do percentage of shoreline, becomes percentage of shoreline. And then they've gotta figure out how to take the points on the corners of the shoreline and bring them to the river with the same percentage.
My expectation is they've done this before.
I'm reaching.
My expectation is they've done this before. And I hate, and I, I know some Matt says it's always, it's always scary to speak for the state.
Isn't it?
Yeah, but, okay, so anyway, that's certainly on May five, we're gonna be grappling with, you know, what to do next with town administrative search. And we're also about the dam and we'll have some more information from the state. Some of the questions that you've asked tonight is those have been things that we have had conversations with the state about. But certainly we'll be eager to move forward with the dam and also with the town administrative search. Anything else, Tim? How about select board reports?
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing? Okay. I, I do, I, I have some comments relative to state budget process and other issues that are with state budget process and how it will impact our change in the town meeting date and so forth. So we'll just do, deal with that later in the agenda. Correspondence, uh, bus stop sign request, I guess, has been taken care of?
That's a new request.
We have a new request.
That you have in there. Matt took care of the one on, you can tell him about that one.
Yeah, the, um.
So we have a new request?
Yeah, we, I got in touch with Mass DOT, the local, um, boss out of two seven oh three out of Athol. And I had a phone conversation with him. It was like three weeks ago. And upon receiving a phone call from, um.
Devin Davies?
Yeah, Devin Davies was, was the name of the resident and she was requesting a sign, so, um.
It was along side of the road or whatever.
Yeah, there was one on one side, on one approach. And the most dangerous approach coming down the hill, right out of the center of town on one twenty-two, did not have one and they were looking for one. And, um, it was said on Facebook that it was five months, but it was, as far as when I got a hold of it, it was three weeks in total. The, uh, state boss moved very quickly, emailed right away and they got a response and they corresponded with me back and forth. And, um, last week it was installed, so.
So now somebody else wants another one.
On Cobook Road.
Looks like you have more work to do.
The letter should be in there as well, in your pocket.
Yeah, I saw it.
There must be some criteria that, um, we have to meet before we just put up a sign.
They do a study. They said, I have email on a chain, but they do a study in this house. I just saw it.
It's in there.
Yeah, I know.
This is up at the.
It's a written letter, right?
Yes, with Cobook Road Camp Road entrance.
Yeah, and I'll be abstaining obviously because it involves my great children.
Okay.
There it is.
I will partake in that discussion. I didn't write the letter.
Yeah, so.
Would you allow me to read the letter?
You, no, you follow up on that?
I will follow up on that. This is, um, for, uh, where is this? Oh, no.
Right up at Cobook Road.
Cobook Road, okay.
Cobook Resort entrance for the trailer.
It's, oh, it's right there where the turnaround is?
Yes.
Uh, Rich, is that where the bus turns around there? Okay, yeah. Um, the only thing is this would be DPW. It wouldn't be the state. We'd be following up with the DPW, so I'll follow up with Tim on it.
Yeah.
Cause, um, that was state road where this one was installed and this one wouldn't be.
Makes it easier.
That's right.
He's into buying signs these days.
Tim's very responsive.
Yeah. Okay, so we're good with the sign, sign issue?
Yes.
Okay. Um, moving on to new business, annual town meeting warrant would be opening on this evening, closing on May eighth at five P M. And obviously we would make sure that that is made public and so on. Uh, setting the annual town meeting date for Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, time at six thirty P M, location, Ruggles Lane School. So we will be in the last month of June primarily because of the status of the state budget. And our, obviously, the fact that we are, we, state aid especially to those schools is absolutely critical. And going as early as the second Tuesday in June, which is often our date, would leave us with a school, uh, assessment we could not possibly handle because we won't have any numbers. And so by the twenty-fourth, we will have the House budget, we will have the Senate budget. And we have three or four very important pieces of legislation that, that went through the amendment process last week in the House budget that impact our regional school district and impact our assessments. So we, we need to wait for that and then obviously see what happens at the Senate. And if some of those things are voted by both, both, we'll, we'll know what, what the assessments really are gonna be. Otherwise, the assessment letters probably you've seen could choke you and say, an eight percent in school assessments? Because it's predicated on what the governor's budget said. And the governor's budget barely, if ever, did anything to, to support schools. So we know that the House has done a lot more and now if the, if the Senate follows, that will really help us a lot. So at any rate, that, that, that's the biggest vote we take at the town meeting finance-wise. And we, and we can't, couldn't possibly handle the assessment that's, that's based upon the, on the, on the governor's budget. Couldn't even get there close. So that being said, um, that's why the, we're moving to Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. I believe last year we were on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth for the same reason. So any other questions? We'll make sure that we vote at this time to open the warrant. We have a vote motion.
Make a motion to open the warrant. Today, four twenty-two and close on five eight, at five P M.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to open the, um, annual town meeting warrant on this, today, at four twenty-two, twenty-five and to close it on five eight, twenty-five, at five P M. And in certainly, uh, understanding that if we had a huge swelling of people who needed another week, we certainly would accommodate that by voting again to extend the timeframe. Because obviously the town clerk loves to get things a little ahead of time in order to do all the preparations that's necessary. But I wanna make sure citizens have the opportunity, if they have specifics that they would like to, um, place on the town meeting warrant, that they have that opportunity. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Those in favor, did we vote that already? I always lose track here.
Aye.
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 Okay, so unanimous vote on that. Set the annual town meeting date for Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at six thirty P M. Location, Ruggles Lane School. We need a, we need a motion?
I move to approve the annual town meeting date for Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, time six thirty P M. Location, Ruggles Lane School.
We have a motion.
A second motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to, um, set the date for the annual town meeting at Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, time six thirty P M. The location, Ruggles Lane School. Those in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Dr. Nash.
Yeah.
Do you, I don't even follow the school numbers. Do you see a positive movement, you think?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Yes, you know, working with Tammy on the budget, we're, we've got a pretty big, pretty big gap right now.
You have a huge gap. We have a huge gap.
I'm very concerned about that.
Yeah.
And certainly, having a town meeting in the June, I fully understand why you presented it that way because it makes sense. But if we need to make any adjustments before July one, it doesn't give us a lot of leeway.
Well, the thing that is, we will have, here's what we're putting on the floor, this is what we're gonna do if something, if it doesn't work out.
Well, what we're gonna do is it'll be pretty disastrous.
Well.
If, if we don't get more local aid.
Yeah, well, I don't think you're gonna get more, I mean, our red mass municipal, their mass municipal is really frustrated because they've got nothing, even from the House, saying that we're gonna get unrestricted local aid, any additional money there. We do have considerable, we have rural aid, that's huge for Quavon, huge for Barry. And so that has been moved, you know, to last year's number. I have no idea why, but the governor just, those rural schools, oh, too bad, so sad. But the House has moved that to a, to a reasonable number and have, we, we have an amendment in there to move it higher. And we've had good results from the Senate on rural aid. That, that's huge to Quavon. We have also in the supplemental budget, the supplemental budget where they had considerable amounts of revenues from the millionaire's tax. We were fortunate in Circuit Breaker to get a chunk of money from the supplemental budget and a chunk of money for regional transportation. Both for Circuit Breaker and regional transportation, you can get FY twenty-five money that you can spend in FY twenty-six. So we have a good chunk of change that Quavon, you know, now can put their hands in the air and they know about. Where the amount of money that we're gonna need for regional transportation will be decreased and the amount of money that we will be spending on Circuit Breaker, which are special ed costs, uh, will be more heavily funded. So those are good news on that. So we've got money from the supplemental budget and we've got, um, new amendments for the House budget. And we'll know next week how those amendments are gonna fare. But we do have a, a good expectation that regional transportation and special ed will be funded by the House with more substantial. And that the minimum made, minimum made is for school districts that get no longer get chapter seventy, Quavon is one of those, um, they are going to give money for each student. And last year it was, you know, started out at thirty dollars and last year we got a hundred and four dollars per student. Looks like it's going to a hundred and fifty dollars per student. Another piece of change that's very important to us. The objective has to be to drive down those assessments. So, um, the, the later we wait, the better the numbers will be. Now, there's no question that as we prepare for this, we have to say, if worse were to happen, none of this comes to pass. You're right. This is gonna be an ugly budget year. Ugly.
Yeah, very dangerous.
But we're not the only ones. I mean, I will tell you, the Temple thing, you know, all, all of the towns around us, it's, it's gonna be a rough ride. Matt?
Other than school budgets, what other budgets, whether it's senior center or the library, could potentially be affected by state cuts? Cause I know there are certain formulas. I don't know what that means. They can just not do it or not.
We, we have not had any information, either from the House people that we work with or from the Senate senators that we work with, as to any impact, that they've seen, any impact. We've had no negative impact in the House budget. They didn't, they didn't do great things for the libraries, but they didn't do bad things from the governor. Because right now, all we have are the governor's numbers. And, um, some of those are okay, but some of them were before things were really getting crazy in Washington and we, you know, having all that come up in that, in that regard. The thing that's really, really scary is if things were to go as bad as they seemingly could because of what's happening at the federal level, if they were to take the Department of Education's funding for special ed, which is called the IDEA funding, which is millions and millions of dollars, millions even to us. If that were to go south and the legislature still say, you must provide special services for special needs children, I mean, it, it would be desperate times. I do not see us going to desperate times in that. I see, I, I understand the threat because, you know, the Department of Ed, I don't know, we don't even know if it's still working. We don't know if the IDEA numbers are gonna be there. We believe so. We cannot fathom, but we could be wrong. We worry about Head Start. We worry about chapter one, which are Title One schools. We have Title One school. Barry's a Title One school. Uh, New Braintree's a Title One school. Harder's a Title One school. That means they get additional funding for reading and mathematics and so forth. If we, if Title One were to go away, and it looks like Head Start money's gonna go away, that's, that's terribly damaging to preschoolers. So, yeah, there's some stuff that's gonna be terrible that happens to schools if some of the scuttlebutt is true. That the later we go, the better we got, the more good information we'll have. And yes, could it be a horrible budget year? Absolutely. Do we, do I believe that over time Barry will have to grapple with a discussion about override? I do. Um, it's not gonna be a pleasant opportunity for us, but until we really get through what, what's happening at the federal level or the state level, it's really hard to imagine that the little towns in New England are gonna be able to figure out how they're gonna fund what the, what the feds have said they're not gonna fund. We can't. So, um, it, you know, we, I mean, we can, we can, we have to say to the, the town and the taxpayers, this is how much money we're getting. This is where it's allocated. This means reductions in force, which means fewer employees, and we don't have a hundred employees, so that's hard. Fewer employees, um, it means, does it mean lesser hours for, you know, people who work here? That we have access because we can't afford to pay them the rate? Does it mean, you know, we, we've increased the salaries, for example, of our Department of DGW, Public Works, in contracts? We've done that because we can't hire anybody unless we do. Same thing's happened in our police department, same thing. So we're not gonna be able to take raises back. We're gonna end up reducing force. I think you know that, I know that.
Yeah, I spent some good time with Tammy and we've got some serious.
Serious problems.
Numbers to, to, to walk through because we're not, we're not in good shape right at the moment.
Well, and, and obviously, because we don't know our, our greatest budget source, which is the state, state budget. So the closer we get to, you know, June twenty-fourth, I mean, I, you know, if you read the papers, Templeton's in terrible shape, just like us. They're looking and saying, what do we do? What do we do?
They didn't do an override. Melon talked about an override.
Well, they've done, they've done an override a couple of years ago, didn't they?
And then they just moved things around and made it work this year. They put the, shelved the, the second or third, but a lot of towns are in the same, same boat.
Oh, yeah. I mean, so it is what it is, but, um, you know, uh, we've been through tough budgets years before. And Matt knows, he's been through some tough ones and some crazy ones where we were sitting out under a tent, hoping we could get the town meeting even in. We could close schools and everything else. It was cheap, but it wasn't necessarily a great couple of years. So we'll get as much information as we can. The biggest driver in our budget is the schools. We have to get those schools, the stuff that's in place, because the school people have worked very hard to get some things in place that can really help towns. So in your, whether, what can we do? Whether you go to Granby or wherever, they're saying the same things.
Yes.
I mean, it's, uh, gonna be a tough, tough budget year. And, and I believe within the next year or two, we will definitely talk about an override. And maybe all we'll ever do is talk about it because the towns will say, no, we'll, we'll take less before we'll pay more. And that's, that's why it's an opportunity for the towns to act.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Is the, um, population in the schools, is it still going down?
It's, it's stabilized. It was this year, all are approximately the same numbers.
Cause I know last year I'd asked that question. I think we, it had gone down fifteen or sixteen students, something like that.
But see, if they didn't go down sixteen students in Barry, it doesn't help us.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, um, so.
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, is the overall population of students in the schools, is that going down as a whole, you know?
Well, during the, the past probably twenty years, we have seen a steady decline in enrollments. Every school district in the Commonwealth has seen primarily a decline in student enrollment. People don't have as many children. They just don't. And so the birth rate in America is lower than it's ever been. Uh, the birth rate in Massachusetts is lower, you know, than in previous years. So we don't see, our, our three-year-old census isn't a place where we look and go, oh, look at the number of three-year-old students that are gonna be coming to our preschools and our kindergarten and so forth. So there's no question that two hundred and thirty-four school districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have the significant declining enrollments. And there's only three hundred and nineteen school districts in the Commonwealth. So, you know, it's, it's, and, and the problem is, you can't say, well, I bet they'll be, the buses will cost less this year. No, they won't. The salaries for people who are driving bus are considerably higher. Obviously, the inflation for fuel and that kind of stuff, you can't say, well, you know what we'll do? We won't heat Ruggles Lane. Right? I mean, you, you, there's too many kids, we could, the district could, the district could consolidate more, but they have to get New Braintree to put their hands in the air and consolidate because you have the town that's really lost a lot of its children, but still have an open elementary school. So, you know, and they, so they moved around programs in schools and that sort of thing. But the, you know, decline, declining enrollment is part of Massachusetts, you know, itself, there's fewer residents here and fewer kids here.
Do you think that there's a possibility that some of the populations in some of the schools would be so low that they may consolidate with another town or another?
Ours, and, and Quavon's district?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, as I said, there's, the, the population is very, very low for students in, in the elementary school and New Braintree. But in order for the, under the regional agreement for the select, not the select board, but the school committee to close a school, at least, okay, the, the people who are in New Braintree have, on the school committee, there's one representative. She has to vote to close it. And that has not been successful, so. Well, because, see, it, it is hard to be New Braintree and say.
Of course it is.
Right? Because they look at it and they say, well, well Barry doesn't have to close their school. Well, yeah, because they have kids in their school.
Yeah, enough kids in the school.
Yeah, and, um, you know, so the, the hard, the hard thing is, it doesn't matter what part of the budget you're talking about. It's costing us more to operate the particular cost center than it used to, unfortunately. And, and that is increasing in costs, okay, faster than we have the capacity to pay. And Mass Municipal has been working diligently on trying to get better, um, information on, um, local aid. But unrestricted local aid is not going anywhere special, unfortunately.
Not right now.
Not right now. And we don't, you know, and I, I know we're gonna bring up the meal stacks again, but we're gonna try to do a much better job in talking with people about what it, what it means. That's, that's, that's a source. what it, what it means. That's, that's a source of revenue, not huge, but a source of revenue. They're getting, okay, people to pay for the EV, charging their EV. It's not a lot, but it's a little. And we continue to do the little stuff, but I agree with you, Mr. Stevens, that it's not going to be an easy, it's not going to be an easy task for us this year. And, and you know, in, in the past, we've had some one-time money that was still left over from this and that and the other things. And, you know, and our finance committee has done a wonderful job with utilizing that over a period of time. But those, you know, the landfill money is really gone. And, you know, the other little pockets. We have a couple old grants left over, you know, that we think we, you know, but it's so inconsequential that we can't really support much with that.
We have a declining population, huh?
Well, we don't really have a declining population in the town of Barry. We have an aging population.
And the state is a whole.
Oh, yes, in the state as a whole.
And that, you know, I think because of the high taxes, people are leaving.
Well, yeah.
And it's, I mean, it's not just here. It's other places too. And, you know, if that continues to happen, then it's going to get even worse. So...
Well, how uplifting.
I'm sorry, but, but that was, that was something that I've been thinking a lot about, because we can't, in the state, if they continue to keep upping the taxes, we're going to lose more and more people, and we'll lose more and more businesses. There's got to be a better solution, so that that doesn't occur. And I don't know what it is, because I'm not, I'm not privy to all the...
Well, I would say that there's so many people working on it, but so many, you know, individuals with special interests and things that they want to get, make sure...
That's probably a big part.
Yeah. And I mean, it's not, I wouldn't want to be the governor, and I wouldn't want to be the people in the legislature trying to figure this out either.
No. I mean, I...
The thing, the thing that, you know, you have to watch how your senators and reps vote. And sometimes they don't vote for our interests, my friends. And I'm talking about ours.
They don't.
They don't. So, you know, we, we work on that, but it's really, it's really very difficult for people who are east of 495 to really understand what it is to live in a rural community. They really don't understand. Our job is to help them to do that. But I was interested to, you know, they're getting a new Commissioner of Education. And I looked at the people who sit on the Board of Education. No one west of Worcester. No one who's not in the city, who sits on that board. So, you wonder why they don't think about us up here. They just don't even get it. So, anyway, that's enough whining and complaining. I know that, you know, with a lot of work by this board and by the Budget and Finance Committee, we will come up with some plans. And they, will they negatively impact some areas? Yes. Will we do our best to mitigate that? Yes, but we're not magicians. So, will we, will we someday probably have to do an override or just live with less? Yeah. But, but that gets to be your vote. And, you know...
Yeah, but the, the problem is, I see it, is that the costs keep going up and there's no override. That's not going to, you know, that's just going to continue to make the problem bigger.
Your new services.
Exactly.
You have to adjust the budget.
It's going to impact so many different things. And, and the overall impact, not just on, on the services the town provides and, and things that you have to do, but also the taxpayers in our town, because I know there's a lot of people here that are on fixed incomes, and, and tax increases for them could be, I mean, it could mean the difference between having to sell their home and move, or be able to make ends meet. And there's got to be some way of, of doing it. And I know that the town has a, I think when someone turns seventy, they get a little bit of a reduction on their taxes. Is that correct? I think it's like five hundred dollars or something like that.
Well, there, there is some relief, but it is pretty inconsequential.
Yeah.
I was just, that was one of the things that I thought about, was that if we do
have people that are on low incomes, that maybe we could do something as a town for them, so that they don't have to sell their homes and move.
Well, the problem, the problem you have is, one thing we have to begin to understand is, you know, when we say to New Braintree, why don't you be more cost-effective by not having that school? We have to say to ourselves, should we be regionalizing more of our services? Should our service delivery patterns not be just, this is Barry's whatever, this is Barry's whatever, you're going to hear us tonight, vote to, to expansion of our emergency nine-one-one system with other towns?
It should cost us more money.
Well, it shouldn't cost us more money over time than trying, trying to go it alone. So, that will happen, and I worry about whether or not the, you know, we have this phenomenal, you know, emergency system with our ambulances and so on and so forth. Everybody's used to it. Every, well, we may not be able to do it the way we currently do it, under these new budget constraints.
Is what they're doing right now not working, or?
It doesn't matter how well it's working if we can't afford it.
I have nothing but positive things to say.
I agree with you.
I just went to the hospital two weeks ago.
I hear you. I agree with you a hundred percent.
So, I mean, they're, they're right on the money there. They, they show up and, and they do everything they have to do.
Yes, they do.
The, when we move forward with changing the number of positions that were full-time in that process, it actually costs less from the general fund to fund the ambulance, because the revenues from the ambulance has increased more than the actual cost of the ambulance service compared to without that extra full-time position. The numbers back it up. If you go back and you start looking at the portion of general fund versus ambulance revenues, funding that budget every year, you can go back about, I think, a year or two before COVID. I'm guessing here, because COVID really screwed up my timeline. So, when we went to that second full-time pairing of running that system, within two years, it proved out it actually cost the town less to do that. So, I'm just suggesting, double-check your numbers, but we think cutting one is actually going to save you, because you actually may actually lose more and have to fund more out of your general fund. Just keep it in mind.
And, and the thing that, obviously, in the police department, and certainly the chief and I have had numbers of conversations about what, what to do when, we get accustomed to having some really fine, you know, local services. We do. You know, we have paramedics on our ambulances, so we're getting advanced life support systems. But getting a paramedic is not what we used to pay. We have to pay more. And we want to say, you know, be an advanced life support system. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that we don't want to do without.
No, especially out here, because we're so far away from hospitals. I mean, you don't...
Hey, you're, you're making a two and a half case for me I don't even have to work at.
Well, it's true. I mean, that just happened to me two weeks ago. I slipped away had the ice and slammed my head on a rock and blessed your guys. I came out right away too. But they were fantastic. My son's a paramedic firefighter, so, you know, I'm kind of, I kind of know a little bit about that. They were wonderful. And you don't want to take anything like that away.
We agree.
Community that's so far away from the hospitals. So, I mean, fortunately, I didn't need to stay in the hospital, but it could have been really bad. And, you know, if they're not there, and somebody gets hurt, and they can't get them to the hospital...
Well, anyway, we have lots of work to do on the budget. I couldn't agree with you more.
We do.
And it could be, it's going to be a difficult year. There's no way to say it isn't. It's going to be a difficult year.
Serious discussion could be had.
Yeah. Absolutely. Moving along, we, discussion to accept provisions of Section 180, 18V inclusive of Chapter 6A of the general laws, providing the establishment of a regional nine-one-one emergency communication district, and to enter into a district agreement with the towns of Hubbardston, Oakham, Rutland, and Warren. We need a vote on that this evening. We spent a good deal of time working with the group of individuals from those towns, looking at what we, what we will call an agreement, and believe that this would be the most cost-effective, effective solution to our nine-one-one system that we currently are invested in. We know, over time, that this district will become larger, and that we'll be doing more and more sort of calls from, from a particular, I think, I don't know where it's going to be located, but we're out of room in Rutland, and we will be relocating the actual, you know, place where dispatch will happen. So, we need a vote.
Can we give a motion exactly?
Yeah, do you have a?
We have a motion right here. Are you down?
I was going to put one together myself, but it's a little bit...
Not necessary. The lawyers have spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah.
Just, just quickly, I did speak with James, the fire chief, this afternoon. He and I are both in agreement that this is probably the best way to move forward, you know, as long as it's working well. And, yeah, I think it's the best opportunity for us to have a little more, more say.
And it gives, and it gives us, it gives us an out. We're not in it forever. We have, yeah, we have a five-year window, and we can decide, maybe not. But I would suspect, you know, from what, what we have managed so far, that this seems, there's a lot of work that's gone into this. There's been months and months of meetings and so forth, and efforts to make sure that all of the, you know, things that could go wrong won't go wrong. And we're hopeful that this will be a, a good dispatch center for us. I would suspect we'll see other towns, you know, piggybacking and coming into this particular, shall we say, district.
Okay.
I'll wait for, I'm going to be ready for discussion. I have, you know, I've gone through the motion and...
Okay.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
I move that the Select Board accept the provisions of Sections 180 to 18V inclusive of Chapters 6A of the general laws, providing the establishment of a regional nine-one-one emergency communication district, together with the towns of Barry, Hubbardston, Oakham, Rutland, and Warren, and the construction or citing administration, operation, and maintenance of a regional nine-one-one emergency communication center by the district under the provisions of the proposed district agreement filed with the Select Board.
Second my motion.
We have a motion made and seconded. We want to discuss before we write. Matt?
I know when this last was presented before the town, one of the clauses in those Chapter 6, Section 18, whatever, indicated the minute they set their budget, based on your little five-member board, that's all going to have twenty percent vote, or whatever this arrangement would be, is you no longer cannot vote no at town meeting. Once that district is set, it's not like our regional district, where three out of the five towns say no, they got to go back to the drawing board. This is, once it's set, you get whatever they're telling you to get. And you can't change that. It's written right into the law that allows you to build a district, is the town cannot refuse the budget once it's been approved by the district. And so, just keep that in mind when you hear nice words about, oh, you'll have a voice. Just because we all know how these five-member boards, all you got to do is make sure each of the five feel good about one thing, and they vote on it, and now the budget's approved, and it just keeps growing. And I do know that every time you add a town, at least, I've been involved with a recent dispatch center rebuild. And they end up with so many consoles where someone sits, those end up being dedicated to certain towns, the way that particular place is. So, every time you add a town, are you now adding a whole new station for that town, with dedicated equipment that you're sure talks to that town's system versus your town. And so, that's where it starts growing. And immediate growth is going to start with a separate treasurer, a separate, all of the paid employees that no longer have a town supporting them, where just a portion of their time is spent on it. Now, it's a full-time treasurer. It's a full-time this. And so, within the first two years, I expect you're going to see a significant jump. And then when you think it's going to settle down, it's just going to slowly continue to increase anyway. You're never going to see the same thought. So, I just wanted to put it out there. Keep it in mind.
I think, I think...
Because by the time you realize it, five years is up, and you lost your chance to get out.
Do you have to commit for five years?
Yeah.
Our other one's even longer, so.
Oh, yeah.
Our other contract, they were even longer. It's twenty-five years.
The one that we were in before.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, this one, you know, obviously, there's, you know, you, you're absolutely right. I mean, and it will be interesting to see what happens in the next three to four years, because we will be making a decision at that point to either, because you can't, we can't go it alone. We know that. We just can't afford it. And so, will others, just, you know, members want to get out or not? I don't know. Right now, quite frankly, we really can't get out, in what we're in. We've been in this for quite a number of years now. We just don't have the equipment. We don't have, you know, unless we could get, you know, the, you know, New Braintree Police Place to do us, but they are not interested.
No. The nine-one's not going to find that's a private dispatch center.
And, and, and right now, there's tons of money out there, okay, to, to do the building, to do the refurbishing, to pay the, you know, costs for those hundred percent. That will, you know, over time, like you said, that will be gone. And we will be doing that on our own. But they are certainly making it so that you're, you almost can't not do this, because you can't survive it alone. Okay, we have a motion made, seconded. Further discussion?
Yep.
Are there none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep, there's an unanimous vote. Please ensure that the documents are signed, Sandy, as necessary, going on from there. Okay, we, I think we've already had a pretty cogent conversation about FY26 budget process, presentation discussions, impact on town calendar, discussion by Richard Stevens, who's going to be working on some fire district regionalization.
So, I received an email as well as Chief Diva Joey to attend a fire district regionalization study on May 6th at nine o'clock at the Oakham Fire Department. And that's just preliminary discussions with some of the local fire departments to see if we can regionalize some or all of our, our services. And for example, between three communities, we own seven ambulances. Do we really need to own seven ambulances between three communities? So, that's what some of the talk is. I believe some of the, it's all preliminary talk. So, certainly wasn't going to go without the board's support that I should attend this meeting, so that's why it's on the agenda. And I know the chief was invited to, to attend as well.
Certainly, I would accept the motion to authorize Mr. Stevens to represent the town of Barry in discussions relative to fire district regionalization.
I would move to approve Richard Stevens attending the fire district regionalization study on May 6th, nine AM, Oakham Fire Department.
Has a motion made and seconded? I'll second it. You have a question?
He's going to be the representative for the town?
Well, I'm...
Not just attending to come back to the Select Board and explain things?
Yes. Right. Oh, yeah.
He's given authority to make decisions and represent the town.
Yeah. And now, the chief, fire chief will be with him as well.
Well, it's just a preliminary discussion, man. I don't think we're making any decisions. That would have come down.
No, that's why I was asking, the way the motion was said, it seemed a little different than, because...
Thanks for clarification, but it is preliminary.
The motion is to attend.
Yeah, it's preliminary discussion.
And I know that the previous chief has had conversations with the Oakham, town of Oakham as well already, so I know that there's been conversation about this. But obviously, we're pretty, pretty much not ready to make any decisions.
It's curious, because historically, it's been the fire chief.
Yeah. Well, the fire chief will be there as well, as, as a member of the board.
It's multiple, it's two.
Yeah. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I, we would be having him report back to us as appropriate. Also, we have annual license renewals, common vituress license for Twitch's Nutrition. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We renew the common vituress license for Twitch's Nutrition.
Yeah, we'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the common vituress license for Twitch's Nutrition. Those in favor?
Aye.
Request to use town property by Woods Memorial Library for library programming on Thursday, July 10th, two to eight PM. Wednesday, seven sixteen, July 16th, from noon to five PM. Friday, July 18th, noon to five PM. And they will be, what property will they be using? With just the Woods Memorial Library location, or, oh, I'm sorry, Town Hall? Oh, they're using Town Hall. Okay.
Okay, Town Hall.
So, they'll be at the Town Hall on those dates?
It should be right on your application too, it'll say Town Hall.
I heard that.
I just didn't put it on there.
Okay. They've done all of the paperwork necessary?
Yes.
Applications? Okay. So, do we have a motion to authorize the use of town property, the Town Hall, by the Woods Memorial Library for library programming in July? And that would be three days, July 10th. And that would be three days, July tenth, July sixteenth, and July eighteenth.
I make that motion, that we allow the library to use town hall on Thursday, July tenth, from two to eight, on Wednesday, July sixteenth, from noon to five, and Friday, July eighteenth, from noon to five.
Have a motion made and seconded?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I made the motion.
Rich made it.
Our thanks to the library for all of the extra things they do.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Special events application, this is an annual thing, the Barry Lions Club Car Show for Friday, September five, for setup, and then from three till five thirty PM on Saturday, September sixth, the car show would come, start at seven AM and conclude at two thirty PM. That is an annual event, and one that has been very, very well attended and well organized. We have a motion?
I make a motion for the Barry Lions Club Car Show usage of the common on Friday, September fifth, set up from three to five thirty PM, and Saturday, September sixth, for the actual car show from seven AM to two thirty.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the Barry Lions Club Car Show application. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have some personnel appointments. The first personnel appointment on this sheet is Council on Aging, looking to appoint, okay, Susan Milkman. It appears that she is someone that the chair of the Council on Aging has indicated has not yet been in front of or met with the Council on Aging, so they are asking us to hold our appointment until such time as they have had the opportunity to meet with this person. That seems to be part and parcel of their, shall we say, responsibilities. So we will pass over that appointment for this evening, and indicate to the Council on Aging that their job now is to meet with this individual so that we can move on the appointment at a later day. Okay? Traffic unit, control unit, the chief has indicated that he would recommend the appointment of Anthony Mobilio to be a traffic control unit individual, and that he would fulfill the requirements of, you know, being able to have that position. I know there's training and so forth that they have to go through. Do we have a motion? He's already done it, okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve Anthony Mobilio to the traffic detail control unit.
We have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of Anthony Mobilio to the traffic control unit. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, also, we have an appointment, the previous, what it, this is just part and parcel of the fire chief's role and responsibilities, emergency management director and forest warden. We would be voting to place Mr. Divagilio.
De Vergilio.
I am working on that.
De Vergilio.
De Vergilio, to have that position as emergency management director and forest warden. And we need to vote to ensure that that is part and parcel of his job duties.
I make a motion to appoint Fire Chief James Divagilio as the town of Barry Emergency Management Director and Forest Fire Warden.
I will second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to appoint the fire chief as emergency management director and forest warden. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can someone just follow up with the chief, or maybe, maybe I could, just to make sure that he reaches out to Dave Salino, State Forest Fire Warden, and Patty Korea, District Eight Warden, that he has that appointment?
Okay.
And likewise, to Agua Regional Office for Emergency Management, that's who he reports to, and he may know that.
He may know that, but Tammy, you would take care of that? Thank you, Richard. Resignations, we do have resignations this evening, and those are always, you know, things that we hate to see. We have resignation of the deputy fire chief, Mr. Scott Fritcher, who has been with us for, I think, thirty years. He has decided to, you know, resign and to retire, and we are really sorry to see this gentleman go. He's been a very integral part of the fire department for numbers of years, has been in a leadership role for many years, and during the deployment of our previous chief, you know, did a great job in making it all work, plus working full-time. So with our regret and thanks, we ask you to authorize or accept the resignation of Mr. Scott Fritcher, deputy fire chief.
I make a motion to accept the retirement resignation of Deputy Fire Chief Scott Fritcher with regret, and thank him for his years of service.
Absolutely.
I'm seconding that.
And we have a motion made and seconded to accept the resignation with regret and our thanks of Scott Fritcher as deputy fire chief. Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We also have a firefighter paramedic, who unfortunately is going to be leaving our employment, but will be working as an on-call firefighter and paramedic, Emily Walker. She has probably not been here as many years as Scott, for sure, but she has been an integral part of our paramedic force, as well as our firefighter group. We will miss Emily, and it is sad that she is moving on to a different and probably more lucrative position up in, I believe, someplace in New Hampshire. So with regret, we, you know, accept her resignation, but also are thrilled to know that she's in our area and going to be an on-call person, so that's very good news.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Emily Walker firefighter, full-time firefighter paramedic with the town of Barry.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to accept the resignation of firefighter paramedic Emily Walker. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have also another individual that we have not formally, you know, kind of indicated that our fire chief, who has been sort of part-time, as we have searched through a number of individuals to find a replacement, and that is Chief Robert Rogowski, who has been with us for twenty-five years, in various capacities of on-call, and the fire chief, and so forth. He has done amazing work for us, and he has been an integral part of any successes that you have seen recently. He has been part of that leadership team that has made that stuff happen. It is not easy to be him, or have been him, it's a tough job. It's one that becomes something that, you know, people like to criticize, people like to make it a kind of tough job. We didn't tell James about this before he took the job, but certainly, we will miss Chief Rogowski, and he continues to live in our town, so hopefully he'll become still a helpful individual as other people, you know, grow and learn into the leadership position of fire chief. So accepting Chief Rogowski's resignation after twenty-five years of service. We have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Fire Chief Robert Rogowski's resignation, and thank him for his years of service to our town.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to accept the resignation of our past fire chief, Robert Rogowski, after many years of service. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, we have some, just some wage authorizations. James Divagilio, am I better?
Yes, we did it.
Okay, I did it. As fire chief, his annual salary of a hundred and one thousand dollars, and all of the benefits that are accrued to typical fire, typical employees within the town of Barry. We have a motion?
Make a motion that we compensate Fire Chief James Divagilio one hundred and one thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year, annually.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Emily Walker, who's now on-call, okay, hourly rate of wage will be twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents per hour, so she will have an on-call position that we authorize, and are really thankful that she will remain in our employ, at least part-time, at the rate of twenty-one dollars and fourteen cents per hour. We have a motion?
I make a motion that we compensate firefighter paramedic Emily Walker at the rate of twenty-six dollars and fourteen cents per hour as a call per diem firefighter medic.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded that Emily Walker will be an on-call firefighter slash medic at twenty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 We have the authorization for a new employee at DPW, filling the administrative assistant position of Shannon O'Connor, who resigned her position sometime in February, and that is Kelly Valeri, who will be the administrative assistant. I believe she started today, and she would be at a rate of, on step eight, of twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. She is an individual who comes to us from the town of North Brookfield, where she had the same position, water, sewer, billing, and so forth, as well as working in the DPW department. She's someone who comes to us with the skill set that we absolutely need, and one that Shannon had, and, you know, provided us with wonderful service for a number of years. So would I have a motion to authorize the employment of Kelly Valeri?
I move to approve the wage authorization to Kelly Valeri for DPW assistant, administrative assistant, to class five, step eight, at twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents an hour.
Second that motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize Kelly Valeri, a DPW administrative assistant, at step eight, twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we have our interim town administrator. Tammy, do you have the basics for his hourly rate?
Um, I'd be, it's ninety dollars for an hour.
Ninety dollars, okay, per hour?
I'll be doing twenty hours.
He'll be doing approximately twenty hours per week, on average, until such time as we have a new person in that position.
Oh, sorry.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the contract, wage authorization contract for Greg Baliconis at ninety dollars an hour.
Yeah, I see interim town administrator.
Interim town administrator, twenty hours a week, is that what it is? That was, okay.
We have a motion made and seconded.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to authorize the individual ten ninety-nine contract for ninety dollars per hour, for approximately twenty hours per week, for Greg Baliconis. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Baliconis has some experience with us, and so he will be able to be on the ground within the next week or so, and obviously, he will be preparing us for town meeting, and so on and so forth, so he will be very busy. We obviously will be moving along, looking for a new town administrator, trying to move that process along as quickly as we can, and get ready to, you know, offer a position to someone who hopefully has a great deal of experience and ready to do some work.
His start date?
His start date? I don't know if he's, until next week he's on the.
So we put him on April twenty-eighth, so I can start going over a few things with him.
April twenty-eighth, and he won't be here full-time, he'll be.
Won't overlap.
Yeah, well, not quite, not, not, not quite, because Tammy will be out on vacation for a big part of May, so I would say maybe a week or two.
Nine, yeah.
And then we're on. Okay, we have concluded the business, they're included in the agenda, and we look for a motion to adjourn, and hopefully that any of you who are interested in dams or town administrator positions are welcome to be here with us next, our next meeting on May five. We may end up having an executive session before that. I continue my negotiations with the DPW department, I think they're close, and would need the opportunity to talk with the board in the executive session before meeting again with the union. So, and obviously, we are still working with the fire department in negotiations as well, and now that we've changed, you know, we have changed the guard, so we've been slow on, you know, continuing our negotiations. All of the language is done, it's just a matter now of money. So that's what we're working on next, so we should be able, I would suspect a session or two to wrap that up, I think. But again, it's very, very hard to attract really good people and to keep them, you know, it's a real challenge.
We're going to keep the curdles we have.
Yeah, for sure. So a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.